Good evening and welcome to the September 2022 Town of Poughkeepsie zoning board of appeals. If you'd all please rise for the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic, for which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I'll take the roll call. Art is here. Larry, I think he's absent.
Absent.
Okay. Christine?
Yes.
Tony G is absent also.
Yes.
Tony S?
Here.
Phyllis?
Here.
And Simona?
Here, on Zoom.
Okay. So for those of you unfamiliar with the process here in Town of Poughkeepsie zoning board of appeals, there's an agenda up here. We'll take each of the items in the order that it's on the agenda. The applicant will have an opportunity to describe their application. The public will have an opportunity to comment on any of those applications, either in person or on Zoom or by telephone. When we get to the end of the agenda, we'll close the record and there may be a short break. Otherwise, we'll deliberate on each of the items and make a determination. You can all stay till the end of the meeting to find out how things turned out, or you can call the zoning administrator in the morning and find out. With that, I see that we do have a quorum, so let's take item number one on the agenda. This is Love Road Guardian Storage, or self-storage.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the D B A. Frank Rettle, the project manager for Guardian Self-Storage.
Mr. Rettle, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do. This is a continuation of a public hearing, but I'll give a brief description of what we're doing. Love Road, we own a piece of land up there. Literally for decades, it's been an ugly eyesore and was contaminated. We spent a great deal of money and several years cleaning up the site through the brownfield program sponsored by the D B C. We started this application, the request for six variances. One of them are withdrawing because we're now code compliant. What we did is we took a lot of the comments from board members.
And you gotta give that one second to warm up and then it'll...
Good.
We took some comments from board members and we looked at our site. And what we've done is we took the building and shifted it north about 15 feet. The result of that is we're reducing the side yard setback that we're asking for. Originally, we were looking for about 29 feet for a variance. Now we're only looking for 15 feet. We're sort of bootstrapped into moving the building anymore due to the topography of the land and also brownfield requirements. So that's about as far over as we can shift it. The first variance is the front yard setback. Code requires 40 feet. We're 28 feet off the road cul-de-sac, so we're asking for a variance of 12 feet. For information purposes, too, the original plan called for five parking spaces here. We got rid of those because we didn't want a safety problem with people backing out of parking spaces. We took those out of there. We inserted two over here and we put the other parking spaces along the road down here. So we tried to make the cul-de-sac as safe as possible. The side yard setback, I did explain. We're looking for a 15-foot variance of the side yard, and that's a reduced amount from the original application since we shifted the building. We're also seeking to have wall-mounted lighting. On the... Let me just pull up the next page. On the front of the building, we're seeking permission to put some accent lights that are higher up in the building. Code says you can't really have those lights higher than 15 feet off the ground. We're looking to put them a little higher. We think it would look better because we're putting some faux brick here. Sticking them in the middle of the brick probably wouldn't look that great, so we're asking for some accent lighting. It's not going to... The light won't trespass on the road or any other properties. It's more decorative than anything else. As a matter of fact, the county highway building just down the street from this has that type of light, and I don't even notice them at night. It's really for aesthetic purposes. Parking. We're asking for a variance for parking. The self-storage industry historically doesn't require a lot of parking. Based upon our experience with a building this size, we're guessing that we'll probably only have 10 to 12 customers a day. It's not a... It's a very low impact. We're providing... We're providing 22 spaces. Code would require 37, so we're asking for a variance of the 15 spaces. Lastly, we're asking for a monument sign to be placed off-site. As a general rule, I think even the county planning dislikes that type of thing. We're asking for a monument sign as you're coming into Love Road. That sign would not only introduce where our site is, but we're also going to put something on there that has access to the Dutchess County rail trail. Dutchess County Planning Department even agreed that it would be a good idea in this particular circumstance. It is unusual, but I think it would be very useful because our building is going to be behind existing commercial buildings on Burnett Boulevard, and we think that that monument sign out front would really help people find their way. I don't have anything else at this time unless the board has any further questions or if somebody from the public would like to say anything.
Yeah, just have a couple of questions. Will you foresee any impact of the parking along Love Road for the rail trail?
No.
And let me ask you, do you own Love Road?
No. Love Road's interesting. It's owned by the state, maintained by the town, but the county, and I believe the planning board is in the process of doing this, or maybe the engineering, the county is going to put parking spaces lined along Love Road here. I've been up there several times over the last several years that we've owned the property up when we were doing remediation. I've never seen more than five cars up there. It's not a favorite spot for accessing the rail trail, but the road is going to be lined on the west side of the road with parking spaces.
Okay. And where you want to put the monument sign, is that your property?
No, it would be on state property.
Okay. Are there other permits you need for that or...
We would go to D O T, yes. Yes, if you were willing to grant that variance, it would be conditioned on us getting a D O T approval. It would be along Love Road towards... Out towards Burnett.
Okay. And with the rest of the property, what do you intend to do with that? I mean, are you gonna... It's sort of a mess.
Yeah, because we own both sides of Love Road if that's where you're going. This side here is going to be... It's all overgrown. We're gonna cut the crap down, throw some seed down and keep it looking nice.
Okay. All right. Those are the questions I have. Christine?
No questions.
Art?
Do you have the proposed monument sign?
Yes. I can fill it up on Google, but if you'd like, I can just bring it over and say, "I see it." Yeah. The proposed monument sign is this. Guardian self-storage on the front, on the top, and also advertising the Dutchess rail trail underneath it.
What's the size of that before I go through all sorts of this?
Pardon me?
What's the size of that?
I can't put my glasses on. Eight feet high by five feet wide. Thank you.
That's not on Burnett, right? That's kind of back behind by the building.
Correct. It's sort of on the side of Job Lots.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So you won't really see it there on the property, back in there?
You won't see it on Burnett, but you'll have to turn into the property.
Yeah. Burnett's down here, and as you turn in, Job Lots is over here, and we're proposing it down there in the state right away. Phyllis?
No, I... And what about the pond? Supposing we continue to get rain? Why do you... Do you have any plans for that?
No, actually, it's not... I haven't gone through this entirely with the planning board, but I don't think it's regulated by the town. It's not considered a wetland. It's gonna just stay there.
Is your concern about stormwater, Phyllis? Or is it... Or just the pond itself?
I think it's gonna have... If it's a busy place, it's gonna have more traffic. Right now, I don't think it gets much of any traffic. And I would just maybe say...
Yeah. I mean, the roadway is already there. This is going to stay green. This entire area will be staying green. So if we get any rain or anything, it's gonna just seep right into the ground like it does now.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Tony?
No questions.
Simona?
No questions.
Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application? I don't see anyone in the audience, anyone on Zoom? Or you can call in.
If you're on Zoom or on a phone, you can unmute yourself. It does not look like it.
All right. I don't see anyone, so I'll...
Oh, are you looking for more?
Yo. Hello?
Oh, are you waiting for someone to talk?
This is... Yes. Do you have a comment up on the first item on the agenda, guardian self-storage?
No, we're sorry.
Okay. All right. And just lastly, the planning board has adopted a negative declaration for this, so we would submit that the project and the variances sought would not have any adverse effect on the neighborhood or the environment. Okay. Then I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Well, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you for your time, everyone. That brings us to item number two. Chuck E. Cheese South Hills approved it. Is there someone here from that application?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Okay. Would you state your name?
Matt Kasevich.
Okay.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
All right. Why don't you describe this application?
So it's an application for the signs on the walls of the building. I believe what's there was existing, and we're just replacing the signs that are there. And I believe your sign wall has changed since these signs were put up, so I think we're requesting a variance for two, I believe, two of the signs possibly. Is it only allowed one sign per building now?
It's one sign for every side facing a road. Yep.
Okay. Do they count the parking lot road as a road?
No. So I believe... I believe all of them require a variance. All... There's four of them. Three... Three Chuck E. heads and then one Chuck E. cheese right in the front door.
Yeah, and the one side that is... Of the building that is facing a public street is the only side that does not have a sign on it.
That is correct.
Right. So it's just a little bit peculiar setting. Yep.
And tell me, are there any additional signs? Or you're just replacing the ones that are there?
Matt's frozen. No. No. We're all frozen. Oh, that is not good. Nope.
Okay. One Zoom room, another one. Don't panic, we're almost there.
I don't have any knowledge. Hopefully, they'll work out the technical differences and be right with us.
Yes.
Would it be the two signs on the side that we'd need the variance for? Since one side does face Route 9, I mean, it's not on the road, but it does face it.
I'm trying to... I'm trying to parse it out right now. I'm a little bit unclear myself. But the expert...
Simona, we're back, actually.
Why don't you wait till the rest of them are back on? Since I won't be able to make a determination by myself anyway, so you'll have to repeat yourself.
Can you hear... Can you guys hear the meeting room now?
I'm sure it'll work out shortly.
Is it?
I want our daughter to dial you on flat.
Thank you. That's different. It doesn't usually do that. Hello, do you hear the meeting room now?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry about that. Try not to have that happen again. All right. So I think the last question was, are you just... Are you replacing... Just replacing things? Are there any new signs?
No, there's nothing... There's nothing new. Each side is just getting replaced with a newer version of their logo. There's no additional signs being added. Everything that is going up was already there.
Okay. I don't have any questions. Christine?
Okay. And the size of the signs, are they about the same also?
Yes, they're all the same size.
That's all, thank you.
Art?
I just always ask the same question. Will these signs meet the code and the lighting goes off after hours?
Yes, I believe so.
When it closes down, when the lights shut down?
Yes. I can make sure that that happens.
I'd like to kind of make sure we have that as a condition because that's part of the zoning code, right? Okay, thank you.
Phyllis?
I have no questions.
Tony?
I have no questions.
Simona?
No questions.
All right. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application? I don't know. There's no one in the audience? If there's anyone on Zoom who would like to comment on this application? Or wants to phone in? I don't see anyone. All right. I don't see any response, so in that case, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That motion carries. That brings us to item number three. This is John Zambrano, 74 Spring Road. Can you unmute yourself? There you go.
Yes.
Okay. Why don't you state your names?
Laura Zambrano.
Ms. Zambrano, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Someone... You're gonna have to get closer to the microphone?
Okay.
All right. Mr. Zambrano, are you... Who's gonna describe the application?
I'm sorry?
Who's gonna speak for the application?
Because this is a green road and it's a very busy road.
All right. I'm gonna stop you just a second. Are you gonna describe your application? Mr. Zambrano?
I'm for a variance.
Yes, I know. I know that. Somebody... Whose ever's gonna speak should get closer to the microphone and then has to be sworn.
Yeah.
So are you gonna describe the application? Or is your wife?
He's getting a variance.
Okay. So Mr. Zambrano, we can't hear you. Do you want to try calling in instead? Do you want to try using your phone?
I'm running low.
Okay.
Welcome for speaking tonight. How was my 10th?
I'm gonna mute it there.
Okay. Is that...
That's it.
Mr. Zambrano? Are you speaking into the phone? Does your phone end with 209? I'm sorry, but we can't hear you. You want... You want to try unmuting him?
Yeah, I'll try it.
Here, be now.
Now? Now we can hear you. So either pick either your phone or your computer.
Uh-huh. I'm in the fog, it's not good.
Are you talking into the phone? Like, right into it? I don't get it.
All right. Okay. We still can't hear you. Okay. Try that.
Okay. So... And you want me to...
I'm sorry that I... You're still not coming through.
Where is my name? You still don't...
Nope, we still can't hear you if you're speaking.
Okay. How long now?
Okay. Now I... Now you can try that. Why don't you state your name?
Okay.
Okay. State your name.
Hey, John Zambrano.
Mr. Zambrano, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Mr. Zambrano? I'm sorry, we still can't hear you.
But then you think of... You can't hear everybody?
Well, I can hear that, and then... Then we can't hear anything else.
Now she's from the house we hold on me now. She have the email. She come.
Are we making any progress, you think?
Doesn't seem that way. So, Mr. Zambrano, I'm gonna go on to the next one on the agenda, and we'll come back to you if you're still there. Okay? We're gonna come back to you, all right? I'm gonna take a couple more people, then we'll come back to you and see if we can make it work. All right? So that brings us to item number four. P J One Enterprises, 14 Cotton Way. Is there someone here for that application?
Yes, I'm here on behalf of the applicant.
Okay.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
All right. Why don't you describe this application?
Okay. My client, P J One Enterprises, bought the property back in November of 2020. They bought the property as it is, and then when they went through the building department to pull permits to do renovations, it was brought to light a few things. One of them being that the building is actually over the property line. So the corner of the side of the building approached over the property boundary lines. We brought a application to the planning board previously, and they referred it to the zoning board due to the setback variance on the side of the house. Currently, a 50-foot setback is required. The variance we are looking for is 48 feet. Giving a two-foot offer on the side of the house simply to bring it within the property boundary lines. So there's no issues going forward. The two feet was chosen because there is a easement to get on and off the property. We wanted minimal disturbance to that as well as minimal disturbance to the neighboring property. And the lot line actually runs up to the edge of the dirt roadway, so that's where the two foot came from.
Okay. And there's no additional construction, right?
No, there's no additional construction happening to the property. Everything was pre-existing, I believe. This zoning department issued their denial letter based on work that was done in 1990. I kind of bought the property in 2020. So we're trying to bring everything up to code and make it realized, so to speak, in order to move forward.
Okay. Christine, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Art?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Simona?
No questions.
All right. Anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? There's no one in the...
Yes, we're not here, Phyllis.
What?
Okay. Mr. Cotton?
Hello?
You can unmute yourself? You, you can unmute yourself?
Yes, sir, good afternoon.
Okay, why don't you state your name?
Lloyd, Lloyd DeCot.
Mr. Cotton, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, what do you wanna say?
That's my property, I mean, um, that property actually, it had that garage, it had a garage on there. My parents moved here in nineteen seventy-two, and I have a problem with this. This is the biggest problem I have. I don't care what happened. But my parents, it was a garage there, and my parents, I got out the US Army in nineteen seventy-eight, and my parents built that, uh, um, addition on there, and they, and they, they didn't... You wanna talk to me? And my parents, um, built the, uh, addition, that, uh, addition on top, it was an existing garage when we moved here nineteen seventy-one, or seventy-two, and it was an existing garage there on that property, and my dad went, he didn't want his grandchildren in the city of Poughkeepsie, and he put, um, he, he put that thing, that, uh, addition on top of that garage. It was already there in the, um, seventies when we moved up here from New York City. Johnny Lee Cotton. And then, and still, and they didn't even, um, he, he did it the right way, and they didn't even freaking close out the permit.
So I-
It's, it's, it's annoying that they did that, and now, it's, now, they're saying that, um, houses, the, the house is on the property. That's all I wanna, that's all I wanna say, that that property existed there in the fifties, or fifties.
Yeah, I don't think there's anybody disputing that. What?
No, they're saying, they're saying that, my, um, they're saying that the property was erected in the nineties.
Ok- okay.
That property, that garage was there in, when we moved up here in nineteen seventy-one. And then when I got out the US Army, my parents didn't want my grandchildren, my kids and niece, and, uh, my, um, deceased wife. They, they, he didn't want them, um, to live in Poughkeepsie, the city of Poughkeepsie, and he went over, he ripped, and, and then ripped the garage down, he just went over the garage. It existed.
Oh, okay. Alright, anything else?
And we were here since nineteen- My parents were the, uh, property in nineteen seventy-one. And that garage was there. Okay, so what is nonsense?
Alright, but you don't own the property, correct?
Excuse me?
Do you own the property?
What, which property?
The property we're talking about?
No, he owned eleven Cotton Way, and the property that we're talking about is fourteen Cotton Way.
Right.
So fourteen Cotton Way is on eleven Cotton Way.
Yeah.
And fourteen Cotton, we were not notified of this. This is the first we're hearing this.
Yeah.
We got notified by neighbors telling us that somebody was trying to get a variance against the property that yields at eleven Cotton Way. We, the, the new owner of fourteen Cotton Way never told us, so we're just a little alarmed. You know, we see this guy all the time, new owner, he could've said something to us and said, hey, you know, can we work something out? This house that I bought from you is on your property, I mean, and I can't sell it. Can we work something out? And he never did that. This is the first we're hearing out there. We didn't even know he had a servant, he didn't even tell us.
They're in front of the planning board for a lot line revision.
Right.
Alright. So- How, how is it that a lot line revision application could be, have been submitted that does not include both parcel owners, or, or, or does it, right? I mean, if fourteen Cotton Way owns-
I, I think Mr. Blumer may be able to identify this, but I don't know that, is the lot line revision currently pending? I don't think there was, there's nothing been done at the planning board.
Right, I think they submitted initially, and then they withdrew the submission, I think.
I think it was officially withdrawn or tabled or whatever, so the planning board would never have sent out notification or scheduled a public hearing on this yet, because the idea was they would need to get clarification on this point first. So the, it, the, the project started, the application officially started with the ZBA here, and this is the first public hearing. But I would think that eleven would have been one of the people that would have gotten notification for, with it being within
Yes.
two hundred and fifty feet, so, did they, so a mailing was sent to eleven?
She called also, she spoke.
Okay. So Mr. Cotton, a mailing was sent to the address at eleven as part of, in terms of this public hearing? It would have been sent, um, probably a week and a half or so ago, and it was also in the Poughkeepsie Journal that this meeting was happening tonight.
Yeah, no, 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 we're not disputing that. We were notified, we received the notification on September third. But what I'm saying is, I mean, it looks like from the application and everything that this is back earlier into twenty twenty still. So we didn't, we, I mean, it's just that we were shocked, I guess is the point, that nobody mentioned this to us. You think you're, you're, you're a neighbor, you own property, you want to see other, and why wouldn't the guy just come off the block? I mean, because we didn't understand what this meant to begin with. So the first notification we got was on September third, despite that the new owner of fourteen Cotton Way has seen us and never said to us, you know, I have a trouble selling the property, um, and can, can you give me a little piece of the blood? Is there something we can do? I mean, nothing, it was after notification. So it was a little alarming to us, disappointing.
I understand.
Um, well, I, I'm not clear that this, the granting of this variance is gonna have any impact on you.
If I, if I, if I may, um-
You did have to take some of eleven Cotton Way's property and give it to the new owner of fourteen, uh-
No, that's not correct.
Something is amped up?
But go ahead, Mr. Blumer.
Um, Mr. and Mrs. Cotton, pleasure to meet you through the Zoom. Um, I apologize for my party, I was under the impression that he did speak to you about this a while ago. Um, he told me that, uh, I should be contacted. I, my understanding, that I, that I should be contacted on the authority. Um, I did send stuff over to your attorney who informed me that you were not choosing him to go forward with you, that you were doing it on your own. Um, we could definitely have all these conversations, and we should and definitely need to have these conversations. Um, this is a preliminary thing to see if a zoning variance would even be granted, to see if we can go down this path. It wouldn't tie you into anything at this point, is my understanding, the board could explain that further if need be. Um, it's simply to find out if the board would be willing to grant an area variance, which needed to be fifty feet, which is only gonna be two feet based on the current circumstances.
Alright, but just to be clear, it's two feet from the existing property line, right? It's not going into any neighbor's property, it's not taking any neighbor's property. It's just encroaching upon the existing side lot line.
So it's the existing side lot that will wear a current perpetual easement, however, the property is owned by Mr. Cotton. It's fourteen, uh, eleven Cotton owns it, that's who, uh, the current owner of eleven, uh, fourteen Cotton, or the property.
From-
And, and eleven Cotton Way owns the, the easement, the easement is part of the property, on understanding, correct?
Yes, the easement is on eleven Cotton Way.
It's in our, so that is technically our property, yes, it's the easement.
Okay.
Right.
Alright.
So then I think the way that this could, would, were, the variance question is one, is, is something that this board can look at, but none of that can, even if the board decides to grant the variance, none of that would be effective unless the planning board would grant the lot line revision. And that could only happen if the two parties agree to transfer the property. So that would have to be right.
My understanding is-
Okay. Okay.
Uh, I don't know, you guys just went out, we couldn't hear you for a minute, a minute.
So what we're saying is, that tonight's work is to consider whether this board would allow the lot line to be moved by two feet, but it's only a preliminary step in the process, and it would have no binding effect, because it would be conditioned upon the planning board granting a lot line revision, which could only happen if you agreed with the new owners and met whatever, you know, made whatever agreement you need to do in order to make that happen. So this is a very preliminary step in the process. If the board is willing to move forward with this, then there would be a planning board application that you would be a party to, because you're one of the owners of the property that's affected by the proposed lot line revision.
Okay, okay, so we didn't understand that, we didn't know what this meant, like, if we didn't present, you know, be present in tonight's meeting, in fact, we tried to come in person, I thought that really getting focused at the zoning, just we could appear in person, we were trying to get in the building. But we thought that maybe if we didn't, you know, uh, be present in tonight's meeting, that maybe it could be decided and just, you know, run time of, you know, for him, I wanna know that a lot.
Uh, no. As-
Okay.
Right, but Mr. Blumer, in, in light of the concerns that the neighbor has, do you want an adjournment to work out those issues, to see whether you need the variance, or? Or do you want a ruling tonight?
Well, I think that they'll need a variance regardless, because-
Right, but I mean, if they're not gonna-
Right.
Now, I, I think an agreement can be reached, and Mr. Cotton, speak over me if you feel that it can. Um, if you could, give me your phone number, and I can give you a call tomorrow, and we can discuss all that. Um, I would-
Okay.
Lisa Gray, talk to Lisa Gray, um, my, um, wife.
Okay.
She'll give you a-
I have your, I can email you, 'cause I have a email, um, I have your email thing from Mr. Calano.
Perfect, yep, that's who I was from.
Oh, you can call him, Mr. Calano.
He's not representing us.
Oh, not yet?
We don't need him, yeah, okay, okay, that's what we'll do, I'll email you tonight.
Perfect, thank you very much. Um, back to the planning board, I would appreciate a decision only, because we don't wanna wait another month to get this decision, and then have to go back before the planning board another month later. So if we could make a decision tonight, I would appreciate that.
I, I couldn't hear what, he wants a decision, or he doesn't?
They want a decision tonight.
Because, because you're going in front of the planning board?
Right.
Alright. Any other comments on this application? Alright, hearing nothing, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those who favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. Mr. Zambrano, we're gonna try again. Can you unmute him?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Nope, he's got it.
Alright. Mr. Zambrano? Are you speaking?
Now he's muted again.
So, unmute yourself. Okay, now, are you speaking now? Nope, we can't hear you. No, we still can't hear you. Are, are you speaking? Okay, we'll try you again, we're gonna go on to item number five. Uh, this is Philip Creamy, thirty-five Beacon Street. Is someone here?
Right here.
Okay. Why don't you step up, state your name?
Philip Creamy.
Mr. Creamy, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
Okay. You can sit.
Okay.
Or you can stand, whichever you're more comfortable with.
I'll stand.
Then you need the microphone, so we can record and hear. Right here? I would take the portable one if you're gonna stand up.
Okay, here we go, you ready?
Yeah.
Alright. So I guess this is what I'm here for, is this addition here. Everybody can see it?
We have a copy.
Okay. Little area right here. And the carport.
Okay.
That we had, thought that we had the permits for it, when I was doing Dr. Paramati's house up the street. I had a, a guy at work for me that was getting the permits together, when the condemned was going on. I, I think it's not confused, but I sent in all my paperwork, my permits, um, a copy of what I did by a engineer and surveyor.
Okay, and when did you do this?
What, when did I do this?
When did you do the addition?
I'm trying to think, when I did that, Paramati's, that's like a year ago. I have a, I don't know, I don't know if you can hear, I'm trying to talk into this stuff, but and I don't know if you guys know, but I do own land on the, I own land in the city and in the town. Did you see where the line is there? It goes over there.
Okay, so we're only concerned about the town part?
Yes, that, I know, that's why I didn't want you, I know you guys got confused with that a little, because when the guy came-
Confused about other stuff.
Excuse me?
Go ahead.
When a gentleman came and made the, uh, survey for me, a- as you can see, where Bob Baxter, he was my neighbor, he put his stuff up there too, and so, can you tell me what we're concerned about really, the most here, so I can explain to you?
You were too close to the side, to your property line.
Yes, okay. On the back here.
On the carport.
The carport, yes, well, I own, past that fence, I put a fence up here. Mrs. Hodges owned the house right next to me, she was an older woman, that I helped get her medicine, helped her and stuff, she had-
Can you hang on a second, apparently?
Sorry, we're having another technical problem, this is-
Recording in progress.
Let me keep going, stop.
Yeah, wait one sec, are we, can you guys hear us okay out in Zoom land? Simona? Simona, are you hearing us? Ah, it's muted again, alright, Simona, are you hearing us now?
Yes, I, I have one.
Okay, sorry about that, I don't know what's going on here.
Alright, go ahead.
As you can see, on where the carport is, my fence is quite a bit on my property, I own quite a bit on the other side of the fence. But it still doesn't meet your requirements, is what I'm saying. Okay? But it's clearly away from the people's property, it, it's a six-foot fence that I put up, that I paid to have put up a, a couple years back. I don't know if anybody's been over at the property and seen what I did there, you know, I, you know, new siding, the roof's new, random blacktop driveway for bricks they put in, I keep the place very, very nice for the town there. And the only mistake, I thought we had the permits for the back and the carport. And I don't know what I have to do to alleviate these problems, that's why I'm here for tonight, to try to-
There's two things, either you get a variance, or you have to rip it all down.
Oh, okay. I'd like to get a variance, please, sir.
Oh, okay. Alright. Christine, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
I paid to have these done too for you.
They're very nice.
Okay, see them? Is there-
Art?
I'd like to, uh, I, I wish you could come over and look and see what I did there.
We all, I think everyone did a field trip and checked it out.
Oh, good.
You have a very unusual lot.
Yes, yes.
Well, I'm gonna stop again, because-
Recording in progress.
Go off mute, Mike.
I will, thank you. Okay, we're back, sorry.
Okay.
Okay, Christine, any questions?
No questions.
Art?
No, just a little bit of, no questions though.
Okay.
Phyllis?
No, except that I will agree with you, sir, your house looks lovely. It's, it's very peaceful, restful.
Very quiet here.
Quite well done.
Trying to keep it nice.
Was hard to believe it was, like, right behind St. Francis Hospital, it was lovely.
I just, I tried to, I tried to make it nice, and, you know, I didn't, I didn't, this did not happen on purpose, because- happen on purpose because I, you know, I feel bad about this coming here. Like, I'm embarrassed, you know what I mean? I should have had it done because this is what I do for a living, you know? But the guy that was doing my...
You would have had to have come anyway if, if you'd done everything right anyway. You would have needed a variance to do the work anyway, so...
Yes, but I could have done it before I did it.
You could have.
And that would have been the right...
I don't think we're gonna hold that against you.
No, that's what I'm saying. You know, I just want you guys to know that.
Okay.
That, you know, I'm not trying to do anything crazy. And if there's any questions, I invite anybody...
We're gonna try and get to some questions. Tony?
Uh, no questions.
All right, Simona?
No questions.
Okay. Anyone from the audience that has any questions? There's no one in, in, in person? Anyone on, in Zoom or on the phone?
And like I said, you're, you're welcome to come and look. I walked you through hardwood floors through the whole house. It's very strong. I did it, just like I did Dr. Karamati's house up the street. Very strong houses. I made, so...
Okay, I'm not hearing or seeing anyone interested in commenting on this, and so I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries. So you can either wait till the end of the meeting to find out, or you can call something this day in the morning.
To see what's going on.
Okay.
Just sit over here.
Sit right over there.
I thank you, sir, for your time.
Okay. And we're off again.
Interestingly, IT is here tonight. Um, they are looking at this, trying to figure out what is going on.
Recording in progress.
difficulties should be up in a minute.
Do you know this is in terms of public comment for them?
They will.
Yep. All right, we are back. Sorry, we are experiencing technical difficulties, but, uh, the IT department is working on them, so just be patient. Hopefully it won't happen again.
Mr. Zambran, we're gonna try it one more time. So unmute yourself. All right. Are, are you speaking? Um, I can't hear anything. Simona, can you hear anything?
No, I can't hear anything.
Okay. So, Mr. Zambran, I, I'm gonna suggest, why don't you just try just using your phone and calling in? And, and don't worry about the computer.
Yeah, we're having trouble on the phone as well, so...
That's not Mr. Zambran, though, is it?
No, no.
While we're waiting, uh, Michelle, is that you on the phone? Tried to speak before?
There was someone who asked if there was going to be general public comment, and I think they should know that this...
Yeah, there is no general...
No, the...
The question was, can you hear me? Michelle?
Ah, yes, hi, Michelle. Yes, we just wanted to make sure that you, um, again, this is a ZBA meeting, so there is no general public comment during this meeting. I just wanted you to be aware of that.
A little bit of shame, 'cause you know it's gonna talk down the telecom, who knows it?
Right.
And Andrew Camp knows.
All right, thank you.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Zambran, yeah, now we can hear you.
Okay.
Okay, so why don't you describe what you want to do?
Okay, we're doing a project with 74 Spring Road.
I think he's already...
It's located in the intersection of, uh, Spring Road and Baxter Road. It's a two-family house. Uh, apartment B faces Spring Road, which is where we live, and apartment A faces Baxter Road. So we're asking for a variance on putting a, a six-foot, I said, uh, from nine feet away from the property line, because, uh, it, you know, we want some privacy, and that road is very noisy, very active. And if I bring it to thirty feet inside from the pro, uh, property line, I'm almost touching my, my deck. So I lose a lot of land.
Okay, and the drawing that you have, does it, are you going from the, from the house out to, parallel to the street? Or just out, parallel to the street?
The, I'm sorry, can you repeat that, please?
The drawing that you provided, um, shows, you know, the proposed fence line along Spring Street, Spring Road, but does it also go towards your house and connect with the house on the porch?
Yeah, the, the thing will go, uh, from the house, uh, where the porch is, and then it continues to towards, uh, Spring Road.
Okay, and just so I'm clear, the nine feet that you're talking about, do you know where your property line is, or you're just taking nine feet from the road?
It's nine feet from the road, because I, I have measured some other fences around here, and that's what basically they have, like nine feet. I've seen some other fences on Baxter Road and some on Spring Road. And, and I went there and I measured them from the road to the fence, and that's what they, they have, about bigger nine feet in the common one around here.
But, Mr. Zambran, you don't know that your property line is, runs along the road, the, the borderline between the grass and the road. Are you sure that's your property line, or you're not sure?
Uh, why would it not be? I mean, there's nothing else between, I mean, I don't have a, a survey.
Yeah, I think there's a danger for you proceeding without a survey to know exactly where your property line is, because if we grant it nine feet, and it turns out this, your property line, which I suspect does not go to the roadway, um, is different, then you would be in violation even after you granted, even after the, the variance was granted. So I, I think there's a danger to you in proceeding without knowing exactly where the property line is.
Or he would have to call the highway to see how, how, uh, wide the, the right-of-way is.
There would be a survey.
Yeah.
Oh, so the highway department, they can probably help me and tell me where my, uh, where the property line is?
They can give you an idea about how far their rights go, but I, without a survey, you don't know exactly where your property line is.
Yeah, so I guess I have to call the, uh, the highway department, because to get a, uh, to get a, a variance, I mean, a, uh...
They'll give you an idea about where their right-of-way goes, but that's not necessarily where your property line is.
Yeah. Okay, so I guess I have to, uh, go in, uh, for another meeting next month?
Well...
Okay, so what can I...
Will you have that information? Will that give you enough time to get a survey and, and contact the highway department?
The survey, the thing with the survey is that it, it costs me a lot.
It's gonna cost you a lot more if you get a variance and you're not, and it's in the wrong place.
If I don't put the, uh, the highway departments, they can tell me, and I can go by that, right?
They'll tell you where their right-of-way is, but not where your property line is. They're gonna go from the center of the highway out a certain distance. That's their right-of-way. Your property line may encroach on that or be different than that.
From there, from their end of their, their property, then I guess from there on to the mine, and what you're saying is from that property line, I need to go nine feet in?
No, what he's saying is, first of all, the highway department line may not match your property line, so it may be that they have a right-of-way that covers half of the grass or all of the grass, but your property line may not relate to the highway right-of-way. So even once you know where the highway right-of-way is, you can assume that the rest of it is your property. So it would...
Who, who would, who would own that property then? Because, who, who would be the owner of that?
There's a...
It's a town road, so...
Right, and I mean, and you can't rely on necessarily what the highway department would say. Into, what you really need to rely on is a survey. If you want to use what the highway department may say as a guide, then we would recommend that you, you know, either add, um, ample space after that, so that, what, what you don't want to have happen is you don't want to build a fence that turns out not to be on your property or closer to your property line than the variance that you're seeking, because then you have to rip the fence out, and that would cost a lot more money than actually getting a survey to find out where your property line would be.
Yeah, because that the only issue is really that part on Spring Road, because on the back, oh, there, there couldn't be an issue at all. It's just really the one on, uh, Spring Road.
And you want to continue back, backed also in the backyard?
Yeah, I'm gonna use half of the backyard.
A portion of that is, would encroach also.
For the back, but I have...
Well, where, where it connects in the corner on Spring Road is still in the yard. So, yes, so a portion of the back fence would still be a, a problem.
Yeah, well, the back of the road is that my neighbor, that's now the, uh, the other property, my neighbor's property.
Right, still close to the, to Spring Road, though, right?
Yeah, I, I know that I have to, the whole line on left and Spring Road is the one that, uh, we're talking about right now, that it goes all the way to my neighbor's property.
Mm-hmm.
And from there, I go into my property, to about the middle, where, where I have written, um, drove.
Mm-hmm.
But, uh, so what, what do I do now? Okay, so if you said I have to get a survey, I have to find out first of all, maybe I can get it if the previous owner, because we just got this house, we bought it over a year ago. So maybe if they have a survey that will help me, otherwise I have to get one. But, but now what do I do? I have to fill another application to...
No, we could just, we can adjourn it for a month. If you have everything next month, we can do it then. If you need more time, we can give, grant you more time.
Okay, okay, then we can do that. Give me a month, and I'll start working on this as soon as possible.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. In that case, I'm gonna move to adjourn this to, it's October, when's the next? Eleven?
October what?
Seventeenth of October.
The what?
Seventeenth.
October seventeenth?
Yeah, because of Columbus.
Okay.
Okay, so October seventeen.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Okay.
For survey. Okay, you're all set till next month.
Okay, thank you very much. Have a good night, everybody.
You too.
And...
To Bill Povell, I believe.
Next is Camelot Village, number six.
Uh, good evening, it's Bill Povell, I'm the engineer for the Abiquin Camelot Village NYLLC.
Mr. Povell, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
All right, why don't you describe what happened here?
All right, this is the, uh, Camelot Mobile Home Park, which is off Chief Road. Uh, there's two hundred-plus units within this park. Um, the owner of the park, uh, decided to replace a, some liquid home. Um, it's at the end of, uh, I think it's Bay Court, Tay Court. Um, it's number one seventeen, and when they replaced the home, um, the home, the new home is wider than the original home, and the front left corner, uh, where the porch is, um, ended up thirteen feet from home one sixteen. Um, uh, the home one sixteen's, uh, it's laid out in a different direction than the, uh, one seventeen, so the, the corners there were thirteen feet apart. Um, because the internal, um, side setback lines would be ten feet, uh, for a potential lot, um, it would equate to twenty feet, um, between two homes. So therefore, we're requesting a seven-foot variance on the front left corner, uh, where there's thirteen now, and then they did try to maintain twenty feet, uh, to home, home on the right, which is one eighteen. Um, but that ended up being point four feet closer to one eighteen, so there's nineteen point six feet between those two homes, and we were requesting a point four foot variance on the right side. Or if you're looking at the home on the left side, I'm sorry.
Okay. Christine, any questions?
No questions.
Art?
No questions.
Phyllis?
I have no questions.
Tony?
Uh, no questions.
Simona?
No questions.
All right, anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? All right, there's no one in the audience. Anyone on Zoom or on, on the phone? All right, I'm not seeing anyone, so I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Uh, any opposed? Then that motion carries. That brings us to item number seven, nineteen Toomey Drive.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Okay, why don't you state your name?
Uh, Jeff Carter.
Mr. Carter, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Okay, why don't you describe your application?
Uh, so we're looking for a variance to, uh, complete a, a deck, uh, that would be fifteen feet from a property line to, uh, connect a current deck, which is seventeen feet, and a pool we just put in the summer at fifteen feet.
And about how... Is it about, the proposed deck is about two feet out from the house, is that about...
So the current deck is seventeen feet with the house. So the house and the current deck are seventeen feet from the property line. I'm looking to go two feet out from that to then square up to the current pool, which is at fifteen feet according to code.
Okay. And your property is, is, that's all fenced, right?
Yes, it's all fenced, then with a six-foot, uh, stockade fencing all the way around. Uh, nylon on the, or vinyl, vinyl on the front and wood on the side.
Okay. Uh, I don't know, any questions, Christine?
No questions.
Art?
No questions.
Phyllis?
And I'm gonna assume you explored shifting the deck so that it was more in line with the existing deck?
So, uh, we can't go any farther over because there's a septic goes right down the middle of the property, so if I go any farther towards the property line, I'm gonna go wherever my septic tank.
Okay.
Or be too close. I won't go over it, but it'd be way too close to, for comfort.
Okay, thank you.
Tony?
Uh, no questions.
Simona? Okay. Um, Chrissy, when the building department goes out there, will they see, will they look for any other violations? I saw, your front steps are...
No, I'm taking those down. I'm, that's, that was my next project after this, is that's gonna come out, I'm gonna put a floating, not attached deck to that one.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I've been aware of that one.
All right. Um, anyone in the audience who wishes to comment on this application? And anyone on Zoom or on the phone? All right, I'm not seeing anyone, uh, so I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and you can wait, or... Uh, that brings us to item number eight. Special use permit for an accessory apartment, eighty-three King George Road.
Good evening.
How are you? Why don't you state your names?
Um, I'm Bruce Mackus, and I'm here with my, uh, daughter, Kristen Mackus, and, uh, Joe Florence, her husband, and my wife Barbara is here as well.
Do, do each of you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Okay, why don't you describe what you want to do?
I, yeah, we have, we have a, uh, we wanted to get a permit, uh, post-construction, uh, because we thought we were being, having the permit while we were, while our contractor was building it, but we did not have a permit. Uh, he did not represent properly, so what we want to do is, is, uh, go through the process to legalize the apartment and get all the permits needed and any, uh, all the, you know, the zoning approved, and so it's an accessory apartment. It's an accessory apartment, it's my wife and I, uh, living in the ground floor apartment of my daughter and husband's, uh, home here at eighty-three King George.
Okay, and tell me this, how big is your apartment?
It's about eight hundred square feet.
And you know the square feet, the square footage of the whole house?
It's about forty-eight hundred, including the garden.
And are you on town water or sewer?
We're on, uh, town, uh, both.
Okay. And how many parking spots do you say you think are there?
We have, uh, five probably or six, depending on how you look at it, but, you know, plenty of parking.
Um, I don't have any other questions, Christine?
No questions.
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Simona?
No questions.
Um, I will note that there was at least one, uh, neighbor who commented on, on the application, that'll be part of the record. Anyone else in the audience who wishes to comment on this application? There's no one in the audience. I don't see anyone on Zoom or on the phone. Then I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to item number nine, Planet Wings.
Good evening, Brian Watts here from D.C. Co's Engineering here on the applicant.
Mr. Watts, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
All right, why don't you describe what's going on?
Um, this is a project that's taken quite some time. Uh, specifically, the history of the project is, this was a former location of the Planet Wings. And the applicant had sought to create an addition and have a dual tenancy in there with Verizon and then Planet Wings. And the course of trying to get through that application, um, to satisfy the requirements of Verizon, he split the project into first just converting the Planet Wings to a Verizon and then adding, uh, the addition at a later time. Uh, we had all those approved and he got a temporary CO for the Verizon and then he spent a great deal of effort and time trying to satisfy those, uh, conditions for the Verizon to get a CO. In the meantime, we had lost, uh, the approvals for the addition, uh, the variance. We come back, we have, um, gotten them reapplied. And then the, um, the applicant did have his architect make a architectural rendering that we required. And the course of getting that accomplished and submitted back, our variance is once again expired for the ZBA. So here we are again, um, seeking, uh, for hopefully the third and final time, uh, these variances reapproved. He had already addressed his architectural rendering requirements of the planning board. And if this is blessed, we will work toward the end of this committee for signature so he can get a building permit.
All right, and has anything changed in your application over time?
No.
Okay. All right, Christine?
No questions.
Art?
No questions. No questions.
Okay. Phyllis?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Simona?
No questions.
All right, anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? Uh, there's no one in the audience, but anyone on Zoom left? All right, I'm not seeing anything, so I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries. Okay. Then I'll, I'll move to take a very short.
Thank you very much.
Uh, a short break, I'd like to adjourn for at least ten minutes. And make that motion.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Okay, here, you, Simona, you can take a ten minute break.
Zoom calls are no, not heard. We can't hear you in Zoom land.
That is because we are on break for ten minutes and we will be back at about seven twenty-three.
Yeah, we, we could not hear you. On the phone.
Okay, but you heard that we're on break, right? I think so, okay.
You can stay there, but we're just gonna discuss it. Anybody have any concerns about this?
No. No.
Okay, it's, it's a particularly unusually sized lot. It seems to be kind of secluded. And if no one has any problems, I would offer these findings, whether an undesirable change was reduced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties created by the granting of the variance. Um, it appears to be conforming with, uh, the style of the neighborhood and I don't think will have any negative impact. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant be achieved by some method feasible other than an area variance, uh, without destroying, uh, taking everything down, there's no other, uh, method to achieve this without the area variance. Whether the requested variance is substantial, mathematically it is, but based upon the unique, um, topography and, uh, sighting of the, uh, building on the land, I think it's, um, it's de minimis. And whether the proposed vari- variance will have an adverse effect on the impact of physical environmental conditions. There's no evidence that will be any physical or environmental impact. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, it certainly was, but that's not a reason to deny the application. Uh, and I would make those findings, I would offer those findings.
Second.
Christine? Do you mind making a motion?
Sure. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number five. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing and results of site visits by board members.
Just, I want you to make one condition note, that the removal of the deck and hot tub.
Okay.
When you get to that.
Sure. Okay, where was I? Here we go. Um, in approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair with the conditions that the...
There's a deck and a hot tub that I think the applicant agreed that, uh, would be removed. What?
On grade?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a floating on-grade deck and a hot tub.
Okay.
And the condition is that those two structures be removed.
Okay, with the conditions, we approve the, the, um, the request with the conditions that the deck and the hot tub be removed. So move.
Or it could be moved so that, that, the deck and the hot tub also, you need a variance for that. So unless you're gonna move.
It's a, it's, it's a, what do you call it, what do you, it's a plug and play. It's on one ten, you know, you plug it through now, but if you take which, it's not a permanent thing. Like this works, I can take it away or kick it, work it up. It's called plug and play.
Technically, it would still require a building permit though, so if you kept it, you would have to get a building permit for it and move it within, so that it meets the setback. So it would have to be ten feet from your property line.
So I, I'd have to move it someplace else?
Yes. And get a building permit. And get a building permit. To, to use it, yeah.
So in other words, if I get this variance to that, I'd have to move my hot tub. Right?
Correct.
And, and, and the floating deck too?
Correct.
Or ask for a variance.
Yeah, or you could get a variance for that. When we spoke, you had said that, you know, it's no problem to move those things.
Well, not the deck, but the hot tub, because I had the terrain and the plaster, I had to get it removed. And that used to, you know, that's a lot longer. A lot of money. You know, and I put a lot of stone down underneath it, because that's what they told me. And I told, they said we made a on-grade, and that's what the, uh, surveyor said, it's on-grade.
Did you guys see it? Did anybody see it?
I saw it from a distance.
Is it a structure or is it?
Well, it's flat on the, it's flat, but it's right up against both the.
So it's against my fence.
Both fences, right?
Against my fence, and I screwed some fence. When I did, I put item four down, I put crushed stone down, I camped it all down nice. And then I put like, you know, four by fours, on-grade.
All right, why don't you take, take a break? And see what we can do.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, it would require a variance unless it was, you know, a patio really.
So what can he do? If we're gonna make that condition and he came in for a variance.
Well, you can make the condition that the, either it gets removed or a variance sought for it, if you want to do that. Or you could perceive, you know, it, yeah. I mean, if you want that to be a condition of this variance, that those structures be brought into compliance. Uh, typically, we don't always tie one variance into compliance with other variances. It's really more of a code enforcement issue. Um, but if the ZBA felt strongly that they wanted those things brought into compliance, then it would have to be a condition.
All right, why don't you withdraw the condition?
I, I withdraw the.
Condition, if, and in fact, if the building department goes out there or some code enforcement person goes out there and notices there's a violation, it'll have to be addressed at a later time.
Okay, so we withdraw the, the condition.
Otherwise, so move.
Otherwise, so move.
Second.
In other words, then we'll have to build and start to look at it, see if it takes us right, no.
Yep, all those in favor, any, all those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries.
So how does the building inspector get out to his house?
If some code enforcement officer goes out there.
Yeah, if somebody has a complaint about the deck at grade, but the hot tub technically requires a building permit, so he shouldn't be using it without a building permit anyway.
So...
But that's a non-zoning issue if he keeps it within the setback packs, so...
Okay.
Then, let's see who's next.
Yes.
Paul, can I just, uh, Paul, uh, if I can, just ask, am I voting on every item tonight?
Every single one.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry, I'm sorry to say that in the beginning. Next, I think is, um, number seven, 19 Toomey Drive. This is an application for an area variance, where he's putting a deck around a pool, and he needs a side yard variance applied. Anybody have any concerns about this one?
I don't.
No.
Then I'll offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change will reduce in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties created by the granting of the variance. The backyard's entirely enclosed, and so it'll have no impact on the character of the neighborhood, although it's certainly in the character of the neighborhood. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible other than an area variance, based upon the current position of the house and the pool, it would require an area variance. Whether requested area variance is substantial, not particularly mathematically, and in fact, this is only two feet, this only encroaches on the side lot line two feet more than the house does, and is in line with the pool, and so it's not substantial. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect, there's no evidence that there'll be any physical or environmental impact. And whether the difficulty was self-created, it certainly was. That's not a reason to deny the application, and I would offer those findings.
Second.
Art, you want to do this motion?
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item seven.
Yes, aye.
This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearings and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts as findings those set forth by the chair. I don't think there were any.
Second.
There were findings, just no conditions.
No conditions. Findings set forth by the chair.
Uh, was there a second?
Christine.
Okay, any discussion? All those who favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. And I think Mr. Watts, that's Planet Wings?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so, anybody have any concern about this one?
No, they're the same, right?
We approved the lighting, the overage on the lighting, we approved that last time? So far back, I don't remember.
It's exactly the same.
Okay.
Does it prove this one based on the prior resolution?
Yeah. All right, this is item number nine. There is a staff report. And so I, I'm... What, actually, the staff report's from...
He wants that. Number nine? There's no staff. Just the old resolutions.
Okay, that's what that, oh, so it is, okay.
So you can use the same findings from the last resolution if you choose?
Oh, then it wins sometimes. Yeah, so the applicant testified nothing's changed, and so I just move. First of all, do we still have to do a EIA on this one?
Planning board was the thing.
Says it's an unlisted action, but...
Planning board was lead agency the last time around, and if we wanted to, I mean, you could simply reaffirm your prior findings. If, I think it was planning board, but on the off chance it wasn't.
Oh, actually, no, we said it was a type-two action, the resolution.
Oh, right, because it was just a small addition. It was less than 4,000 square feet, so you don't need to do seeker.
Yeah, so it's a type-two action, nothing to worry about.
Thank you, Mike.
On number nine?
Yep.
Okay, to that. Let's see. I move to accept the application, to grant the application, item number nine, based upon site visits, testimony, and the prior memorandum and findings.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those who favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. So then let's go back to... Go back to number one, Guardian Self-Storage.
Ryan Watts. Ryan was on for the Planet Wings.
All right, so we made, on Guardian Self-Storage, we made a bunch of comments. The applicant seemed to take those into consideration, move the building a little bit, change some of the things. Anybody have any concerns? The county had thought it was a matter of local concern, but had some comments that I think have been addressed. Lighting, I don't think is going to be a big issue. Yeah, it seems to be just sort of decorative, sort of stuff.
Again, if they have the same, usually, you know, almost the same lights.
Right. All right. So there is a staff report. So, if those do mind making, do we have to do a...
This was, seeker was planning board, so that's already taken care of. So it's just a, you can do a motion based on the staff report.
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number one. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing and the results of site visit by board members and the staff report. In approving this, oh, in approving this variance, the board adopts the finding as set forth in the staff report.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, all those who favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. That brings us to item number two, Chuck E. Cheese. Now, is this an unlisted action or not?
This is an unlisted action, yes.
Then... I move that the ZBA determine that this is an unlisted action appropriate for the uncoordinated review and declare itself to be lead agency.
Second.
Any discussion? All those who favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And I move that the ZBA determine that the action will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment for the reasons set forth in the determination of nonsignificance for this action.
Second.
Any discussion? All those who favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. All right, there is a staff report on this one. Does anyone have any concerns? Tony, do you mind doing this motion?
Okay, so this is, uh, this is number two, right? So, uh, okay, move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number two, and this is based on the decision of the applicant, site visits by board members, staff report. And, uh, I think that's it. Determinations of the staff report. So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those who favor signify by aye?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Then that motion carries. All right, number three was adjourned. That brings us to item number four, 14 Cotton Way. This is a variance which I think would be subject to the planning board's approval of a lot line.
Revision such that the lot line is no closer than two feet or no? No closer than two feet to the house, right?
To the existing building.
Right.
Uh, there's no staff report on this one, and this is a type-two action, so let me make these findings. Whether an undesirable change will reduce in the character of the neighborhood. This home has existed there for quite some time and have no impact on the character of the neighborhood. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than area variance. There's no other feasible way to pursue this. Whether the area variance request is substantial. Mathematically, certainly is, but this is an effort to legalize an existing situation. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, there's no evidence that there will be any physical or environmental impact. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, it certainly was, but that's not a reason to deny the application. Simona, are you okay doing this, this motion?
Uh, yeah, I think so. Um, just let me know if I, if I need to add anything. I move that the board approve the request for the area variance set forth in item number four. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. The approval of this variance is subject to, um, is subject to the following conditions. The planning board lot line revision so that the existing building is no close, so that, uh, so that it is no closer than two feet to the existing building. So move.
Second.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those who favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, then that motion carries. We did item five, next is item six, Camelot Village. Anybody have any concerns about this one?
I thought it looked farther away than the way some of the other ones were crammed in. I mean...
Yeah, he's been upgrading a lot of the homes in that park. I mean, he is trying to improve it, so...
Um, I think that the applicant's findings are acceptable. And so I would offer those as findings. Christine, do you mind making...
Sure. This is number six. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number six. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings set forth by the applicant. So move.
Okay, any discussion? All those who favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Bless you. Any opposed? Then that motion carries. That brings us to, uh, to item number eight. This is a special use permit. Uh, there is a staff report. Is this an unlisted action?
This is an unlisted action, yeah.
Then... Need a break?
No, it's allergies, sorry.
Okay. I move that the ZBA determine that this is an unlisted action appropriate for uncoordinated review and declare itself to be the lead agency.
Second.
Any discussion? All those who favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next, I move that the ZBA determine that the action will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment for the reasons set forth in the determination of nonsignificance for this action.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those who favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Then that motion carries. There is a staff report on this one. And, do you think, no one had any concerns, right? I mean, it seems to meet all the criteria, and so...
It's the only one I've ever had that actually really neatly fit everything. It was great, did a good job.
Christine, did you?
She's going to do it, she wants to do it, she must have do another one.
All right, go ahead, Art.
I move that the board approve the requests for an area variance set forth in item eight. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts as findings those set forth by the chair and the recommendation, the staff report.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those who favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. Uh, that's the end of the agenda, except for other business. Uh, there's a request from the planning board to be lead agency on the Westerly House, 45 Springside Avenue. Uh, does anybody have any objection to the planning board being lead agency? All right, then I move that the planning board be lead agency on this application.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those who favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, then that motion carries. That brings us to the end of our agenda, and I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those who favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thanks.